I do apologize, the mics were working this afternoon. The clerk informs us, but for some reason they are not working this evening. I'm gonna blame it on the squirrel that died in here about two or three weeks ago, which would've been worse if you were here than having no mics. So, we were kicked out of our council chambers for a meeting or two. Staff did an excellent job finding the critter. But, anyway, welcome to the Oviedo City Council meeting. It is Monday and it's March 4th. It's about 6:40 PM. We have all members of council present. If everybody can rise, we'll do the pledge of allegiance. And Councilwoman Drago, why don't you lead us in that?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, I'll get my agenda up. Next item up is the invocation. And Mr. Cobb or Chief White, who would like to do that this evening?
I'll rock, paper, scissors over there.
Rock, paper, scissors. I like that.
I think it was my turn.
Alrighty, thank you, Mr. Cobb. We do appreciate it.
If you'd like to join us, feel welcome. Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for this wonderful town that we call home. Thank you for our council, Lord. We ask that you be with them tonight. We ask that you guide them and grant them wisdom to make the decisions that they have to make. We ask that you be with our city. We ask that you be with our country, Lord. We ask that you bless us and keep us whole and lead us home safely tonight. We ice these favors in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Brian. Alrighty, our first item of business this evening is probably why most of you are here, and it is the recognition of the Oviedo High School Girls State Championship Soccer Team. So, ladies, you hang on out there in a second, council. Why don't you come join me down in the front? Thank you, Drew. Feels like yesterday that we just did this. And this is amazing to see the young ladies out here again. And I went out the hallway and it seems that about a third of them were here two years ago. So, Coach, why don't you come on in? Coach Whisen, come on in, join us. I got some info on the team here that I'm gonna share. I'm sure most parents know this, but it seems like they had a record this year of 16, 6, and 3. They won five straight after districts who won the title. Their last three or four games were won in overtime. I remember reading that on the news. Two of which were penalty kicks. They won 4-3 against Eastlake and then 5-3 against Lourdes. Lost to, well, the last mention is Chief White, he put this in there. Lost to our close town the other three times, but then won the quarter time. That's what it counts.
That's right.
Oh, I heard "last right." Is this some level of a partisan crowd? You know, guys, I had to move over to each high school so you could go to my life. That's okay. That's okay. Partisan all you want, preserve it in new forever. Let's see where I was. They, oh yeah, that other school. Let's see, district one, our state one, 55 goals that they had. It looks like incredible. Fourth final four in the last six years. That's pretty impressive for girls. All three final appearances have ended in penalty kicks. Our girls won them twice, lost once. I think that that is just amazing. And from the Oviedo City Council, to everyone out there, let us give you a round of applause. I'll bring it over to you so you can introduce the girls. I have a roster. You knew the roster. I have that, huh? Why don't you introduce the girls? How much did they run? The last game as well, if you don't mind.
The first, probably 10 of them, eight of them. I don't know how far back we go, back we go. But we're introducing them in classwork. So we had our seniors coming first.
Okay.
The seniors on the team, I think all of us, one or maybe two were on the state championship two years ago. And then our, two of our three juniors are on the team.
Great.
So I'm gonna introduce them that way and bring them in and introduce them. So first is Gabrielle Rodriguez, number 2, she's a. Gabrielle's on the team two years ago.
Hey, you can tell Gabrielle's on the team too, because she knows how to do it.
Madison Greco. Terry Fisaco. Riley McCallum. And our last senior with us tonight, Lucy Ankello.
Coach now, right? The seniors still don't know how to play soccer?
A couple of are still attempting to find a school to play in.
Okay.
And yeah, so we have to do their trying, because right now I'm no one yet having a school to play in.
Alright.
Before we move on with our other seniors, I'll introduce my other half who makes things stick. We've worked together now for eight years in the March Model, and without them, I don't know if we'd even be around here today. My assistant coach, Phil Marver. I called him, I'm calling him the, uh, the fourth rated assistant coach in the nation. Some of those coaches' titles he hasn't called, but he always calls them those rated assistants. They're possible, so they're a great asset to our community and our school. Start with our juniors, Emily Cogren. Ally Jacobs. Ally, good thing she had a choice, her parents were trying to find a school they wanted to go to, either our cross-town foe or Oviedo. We're glad she picked Oviedo, it's been really special on our way this year. And our last senior with us is Madison Tucker. That was on the team two years ago as well. So all of our sophomores freshmen, this is their first experience with the state finals. So I'll start with our sophomore, Alyssa Parker.
Sure, the last, right? Broke that.
And our goalkeeper who saved three penalty kicks over the last two games. Our freshman, Margaret, a nice addition. They're really great kids, as well as talented soccer players. They've been so nice to us, our group, and did an awesome job all year long with us. So I'll start with Andrew Nescu. That was today. Hey, very well. Eric Barabon. And Laura Hay.
Well, another sign for the last few games. Who's the captain? Are they a local captain?
Multiple ones.
Uh, we have old captains up right here.
Senior, why don't you guys call for them?
Alright, seniors. Alright, thank you. The ladies who were here before probably know we happen to be here for you. Council, why don't you come on up and unveil this one? Now, these will get proudly displayed throughout the city. The ones that are out there will get updated. This one is for you, once we fix a typo in it. But now, let's open it up. There you go. Oviedo High School's Girl Soccer 5A Game. Alright, now let's get this all together.
Same year, both of them, while we're going through, there is, it was 6A for 2011. But the FHSA reclassified everything two years ago. So we only had a 5A. So 5A, 6A would've been for this one, but then 6A would've been for 2011, 5A for this year.
That's confusing. You're just leaving 6A, 5A. Like, ladies, this is the new one that you're getting back to high school and display it wherever you want. Where'd you put the last one, Katie? Out on the field or?
Right around the ticket booth, starting to see it when they walk in.
There you go. We can have the number one put out in front of that ticket booth. Just absolutely congratulations, great job. Drew, somebody come squat down.
Yes, it's a lot of people. Council, and I will put the text right down. Try to squeeze in.
Somebody cover that, come on this side. You gotta get nice and low so we can count the numbers along. Guys, all of them up now.
We're gonna take a lot bigger, because we're gonna go up top too, so. Okay, big smiles. Oh yeah, just gonna get big smiles. And one more.
You're there, are you okay? That's what I'm running out of. Three, and I suppose you jump the bathroom, come on. Down there goes the button. Mark, did you hear that? Art, Drew, I'm gonna go ahead and just pass you over. Little drop it. Hang on a second.
Wait, Mr. Mark, can you go again?
I'll get out, I'll get out.
It's my music, man. Well, that way, it's Mary.
You're some villain, son. Alright, now wait, everyone look up top. And Drew is up there, oh, that's mine, perfect. See him up top?
6A dash 2011, 5A dash 2012.
Okay.
Makes a real significant difference.
Drew, you want to decide back or you want to take it? Drew, you want to go with it or not?
I'll take it. We'll change around, bring it to you. Get back there and you'll take it. I'm gonna watch you with this color.
Ladies, great job. We're down here again, so yeah.
What's up, girlfriend? Ain't that trouble? You're always in trouble. I'll tell you something. Alright. Take care of business. Your life's gonna be easier. Awesome. You've got all these memes freezing. Yeah, don't worry about it. I am very good. I am very good, very good at organizing. My life's much easier, so I need that call by Friday.
I'm happy to enter your room. Alright. Alright, the next item up is a ceremonial item, and it is the recognition of police accreditation. This is the fifth time that our police department's been accredited. And Chief, you guys have done an exceptional job. So come on up with your plaques. I want to figure what it's all about.
Mayor, thank you.
Congratulations, Chief.
As the mayor said, this is our fifth accreditation. And basically what the process is, the Department Commission for Law and Order Accreditation is a entity of itself. However, it was created by state statute and it is under the guidance of the Department of Law and Order. The process, the commission has approximately 260 different stages that this department has to meet. Adnealing from everything, from high liability issues to infant court control, to financial issues, and human resource issues. The department had its onsite in late December. On February 21st, we went in front of the entire commission, which is comprised of sheriffs, municipal chiefs, judges, representatives from state law enforcement. There's a city manager on it. So it's a cross-section of not only law enforcement, but state government. At the onsite, our three assessors, we then make a recommendation, show that we not only meted by policy the standards, but talking to the individuals of the department, but the people in finance and HR, to make sure we weren't doing what they say we're doing. We were initially accredited in 2000, again in 2003, 2006, 2009, and 2013. We'll be up again in 2015, and you have our commitment to stay accredited eight days.
Congratulations, Chief.
I do have to add, I greatly appreciate the commitment and the support of the city council and the city. We represented at our next interview, we did open for the entire department, and our accreditation meeting of February. I appreciate that, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Goodness, the package, Chief, congratulations, great job. Alright, next one, go. We're done, we're done. Alrighty, moving right along, our next item is an update on the Employee Health Wellness Center. And I will turn it over to our city manager for a brief introduction.
I think this item is placed on the agenda to provide to the Garen Group with the opportunity to present their analysis for the employee health wellness center's impact on claims and return on assessment. We'll be very pleased with your report tonight.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. My name is Shawn Fleming. I'm a senior benefits consultant with the Garen Group. And with me as well is Anna Maria Studdly, who's the managing director of the Garen Group. As the city manager said, what we wanted to do tonight was just give you a brief overview of some of the results of the Employee Health Center. Looking back, actually back to inception of the Health Center in 2010. You should have a packet. We have everything on the PowerPoint, but in that packet, there's actually a copy of the presentation. And additionally, there's a written summary of the items that I'm gonna go over this evening. So we'll walk through some of those. Just to give you a little bit of background, the Employee Health Center was opened in 2010. It's operated by a third party, which is CareHere. It's currently open 20 hours a week, and employees have the ability to go to the Employee Health Center at no cost share, so no copays as they would have on the medical plan. So if we get started here, I'm just gonna figure out which button. Here we go. So the first slide we have here, one of the key items we look at with the Health Center is capacity. And the way we judge capacity is we look at the number of appointments that are available in the Health Center, and how many of those appointments are filled. And you'll see a red line going across this bar graph. That indicates 85% capacity. And 85% is really where we look to see if we need to expand hours. Because if you start getting above 85%, you'll see situations where employees may get sick and they can't actually get in that day or the next day. So we wanna leave some capacity for that and additionally work calm. But you'll see, the last couple months, we've been over that 85% capacity. The capacity has been very good since the Health Center has opened. And we will, because that capacity is creeping up above 85%, we'll take a look at that in the next couple months here, if that continues, to look at a recommendation of possibly increasing those hours. There we go. Now I found it. The next slide is actually just a number of appointments running through the clinic in a bar graph. You'll see that we started out in the first year, we averaged about 192. That's up to 344 now. So we've seen a steady increase as employees and their dependents have gotten used to using the center and going there and have enjoyed the services in the center. The next slide is one of the other key indicators we look at, which is prescription utilization. And you'll see that the number of prescriptions has increased steadily since we opened the Health Center. But you also see the last couple months that it's actually trending down. And that's actually a good thing, because we wanna see that after a couple of years of treatment and that care that's being offered through the center, that employees may actually be able to get some of the conditions under control and be able to get off these medications.
May I just ask a question?
Yes, sir.
That doesn't necessarily mean that they're going to Walgreens and those prescriptions.
No, and we'll actually show you some slides that'll kind of answer that question for you.
Great, thank you.
This next slide, no problem at all. Stop me at any point if you have any questions. The next slide just gives you a little background of what I'm gonna go through in the subsequent slides. What we did is we're taking a look at medical plan data from Blue Cross going back to 2009, which is actually the year before the clinic started, using that as a baseline, and then measuring the impact of the Health Center on the health plan over that time period. So if you take a look at the next slide, the first thing you're gonna see is number of professional office visits through the Blue Cross Medical Plan. You see in 2009, there were 1,619 office visits that occurred in that calendar year. In 2010, when the Health Center opened, that dropped down to about 1,200. And it's actually continued to drop down since then, with only 945 running through the plan in 2012. So we've seen a significant reduction of over 41% there. And along those lines, we also wanna look at the cost of those visits, and you'll see that the results are very similar and pretty much follow the same trends. You went from spending over $352,000 in 2009, the professional office visit setting, and you're down to about just under $200,000 now. So a very significant reduction. Then the next slide, to answer your question, Mr. Mayor, same thing with the number of prescriptions. We started out with about 4,400 prescriptions running through the plan in 2009. Last year, only a little shy of 2,800. So you've seen that utilization actually trickle down a little bit in the Health Center, but significantly trickle down in the health plan, which is good news. And then prescription costs again. Costs were at over $234,000 in 2009, down to about $156,000 last year, so a pretty significant reduction.
Of those, let me ask you, of those prescriptions, do you have a number that shows the prescriptions that we could be filling? Do you have a breakdown that shows what we, people that are going outside to get prescriptions that we can handle right here?
We do get reporting that shows us, you know, the prescriptions running through the Blue Cross plan.
Right.
We, for this, we didn't go through and identify that, but we can take a look at those prescriptions running through the plan and see how many are offered in the Health Center. Typically, the ones, a lot of the ones that we see left over are more your higher-cost brand-name drugs. But we will continue to take a look at that and see if there's any ones that we can potentially add to the formulaire in the Health Center.
Do we send out notices to employees who may be filling their prescription at a drug store at a cost to them that the generic alternative is available at no cost to the clinic? Have we gotten to that point yet?
Right now, we're not doing that. That's something that we could work with the clinic vendor to potentially target. We do have to walk a little bit of a fine line with protected health information, to make sure that, you know, we're not releasing any individual's health information to do that. But that's something that we can work with the clinic vendor to take a look at.
I'm sure a generic message can be sent that, you know, there, you may be able to save money.
Definitely. And we've done a lot of marketing along those lines, and we can look at continuing to do that moving forward. On the next slide, we do take a look at emergency room visits. There's not necessarily a direct correlation between the Health Center and the emergency room. Obviously, the Health Center is only open 20 hours per week, so if you have a situation where maybe you could go to the Health Center, but it's not open, you may defer to the emergency room or urgent care. But you will see that it's remained relatively flat over that time period, the utilization. And then the next slide is we look at inpatient and outpatient facility utilization. Looking at your inpatient admissions to the hospital, which is a major driver on the cost plan, on the medical plan, the average cost of an admission over this time period was about $11,400. So anything we can do to get someone healthy and to keep them out of going to the hospital at that $12,000 a visit is significant. And you'll see in 2009, the number of days was 177 days spent in the hospital, over 50 visits. That was cut more than in half in 2012. It was 72 days spent in the hospital, only 24 admissions. The next slide, we do like to throw this in, is your catastrophic claims cost. So we're describing a catastrophic claim in this situation as any claim over $50,000. So that's any member for that plan year that will run claims over $50,000. And as we take a look, the number of individuals in that situation has remained relatively constant in the past four years, between five and six. But you'll actually notice that the cost of some of those claims have decreased. There's not always a direct correlation that we can drive between the clinic, but we know that if employees are focusing on preventative care, they're getting it and getting their medications, that there's cost savings and healthier outcomes from that down the road. With the next slide, what we do to look at claims costs over a time period is we take the total number of claims each year and each month. the total number of claims each year and each month, and we divide them out by the number of employees on the plan. The reason we do that is to account for any changes in enrollment, you have people drop on and off the plan. And we look at that number over that time period. You'll see over that time period, the costs remain relatively consistent in the first three years, and then have actually dropped down some in 2012, so we're seeing pretty significant results. When you look at this graph in itself, it doesn't appear to be anything special. But what we have to keep in mind with medical costs and the cost of care, is that in the state of Florida, over the past 15 to 20 years, the average increase on a yearly basis has been around 9.3%. So in your presentation, there's actually a graph in the written presentation that compares these numbers, actually on an annual basis, to what that would be at that 9.3% each year. And the differences are pretty significant, when you understand that you're trending down. And had you gone up at 9.3% a year like the rest of the market, your costs today would have been almost 31% higher than when you had opened the clinic. And being that we like numbers, we actually like to look at that return on investment in a couple of different ways. The first one is the method that I just described to you. The second one is the table that I have for you here. And what we've done to walk you through this, is we take a look at the number of visits and prescriptions that have run through the Employee Health Center, and look at the average cost of those services on the Blue Cross Plan. And say, if our employees had gone through the health plan to have those same services that they had done in the clinic, what would that have cost us? How much did we avoid? And in this situation, over that time period, you've avoided about almost $1.4 million in claims costs in that time period. In comparison to your second column from the right, spent about $827,000. So the return on investment, just looking at the medical insurance alone, has been about $1.66 for every dollar spent. So the clinic's been an excellent investment, as far as reducing the cost of the medical plan. And additionally, it's also important to note that the employees have saved significantly by avoiding those copays, to the tune of about $380,000 down below. What's interesting also to me, because I happen to like the numbers, is whether you look at the method I described to you with the previous slide, or this method, the ROI pretty much comes out exactly the same, so we have a nice test validating the results there on the Health Center. And I do want to throw in, just before the summary slide, a couple of important things to note. Even though we are seeing significant reductions, offsetting trend, and the clinic is doing what it's supposed to do, we do have some large claims that we have to continue to watch as we go into this year's renewal, as well as just those increasing medical costs and healthcare reform, and some of the costs that we have to address for the provisions and that. So as we move forward, in the next couple of months, and working with staff, we'll be looking at all those items as we work to budget for the next year. But this piece is obviously a significant improvement on what's been going on with the medical plan. So we're very excited about the results there. And with that, this last slide is just a summary of some of the items that we hit on throughout the presentation. And I'd be happy to answer any other questions that you may have.
Terrific, thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
I've got a quick one. You know, and the trends are all great. I guess my question would be, when do you hit that point of diminishing returns on this? How far out in the future can we expect to see these trends going down?
Typically, somewhere in the five, maybe five to seven-year range, you start to see the diminishing returns. A law, one of the biggest drivers of that is the dependent utilization. We typically see, in the first couple of years, you'll get the employees in, you know, you're giving them convenient access, they can get in there easier. And it depends on if the dependents will start using that center more and more, that we'll really see if we keep seeing that reduction, or if we start to see a leveling out along those lines. The good news is, you know, with medical costs increasing at that 9.3%, even if you're staying flat, those are a lot of costs that are just increasing at your 1% or 2% per year normal inflation. So even if that levels out, you're still seeing a positive return on investment for that.
Thanks. Anything else?
I received an increase in the number of employees, separate employees utilizing. I see the usage going up now, looking at the other way, the, from all the employees, or the number of actual employees increasing also. Or is it, we're seeing a similar number of employees utilizing it, and that hasn't really increased?
I would, I'd have to give you the answer to that. That's an excellent question. That's what we call the unique patients.
Right.
You know, so looking at, is it people just going over and over, or new people coming in? We could have the clinic vendor run reports to actually give us that information, and report that back, and get that information to all of your might.
That would be good. And, you know, again, we're saying all this, and again, I know there will be a point where we'll hit that diminishing return, but I'd like to get to that point and be there rather than, and stop there than, you know, keep looking at savings as much as we can, get to the point where we're saving as much as we can.
Definitely.
Anything else, Mayor?
Well, we want to thank you for the excellent presentation this evening. When we put this in operation a few years back, you know, it was well thought out. I mean, the numbers that were given to us, of course, nothing's a guarantee, but it's nice to see that they're coming into fruition, even a little bit greater than I think we expected in a two-year period. And we look to continue along and increase utilization. That seems to be the key to this, is to get the employees, as you said, and then now get their dependents comfortable, you know, using the clinic. And, you know, it would be interesting, as Councilman Schenk asked, to see what the actual employee utilization number is. To see if, you know, that number's going up, rather than just the number of users continuing to use it. We're seeing new users in there. So I think that would be an interesting trend to see, and if we stagnated on that number, I guess the next challenge is, how do we get the rest of them to start to trust it? Because I really think that's what it is. It's just a matter of, once you use it, and you see how convenient it is, the cost savings, how good the care is that's given by Dr. Grant and her team. I think that's really the key, is just to get people in the door. So it would be interesting to see how we go forward.
Yes, sir. Well, I agree with you 100%, and we'll continue to, you know, work with staff to market as needed, and to get that information out, and also work with.
And also, because you keep saying it, it is a great number to look at. If we can break it down, is the unique users, the unique employee, and the dependence, so we can see the trends both ways, to see if we're increasing our dependent trend, which would be good, and to see if we're increasing our employee trend, which would, again, would be good, just so we can understand. And to help us, I'll say market, because I'm looking at that number going, $386,840, that's employee savings over three years. So that, those are numbers that, as an employee, I'd be looking at that going, wow, that's, you know, and those, I see those, the 40 and the 15, other places are higher than that at this point now. Those aren't even, so, you know, that's the other comparison that people look at, and I know they talk to their friends and say, well, the copays are $25, so that's at a $15 copay. It's out of your pocket every time, you just know you're walking in the door. So those are great numbers that we can then look to help get either the employees, more employees on, or the dependents to come in.
Mr. Mayor. You know, it might not be a bad idea to just, you know, for the employees that have never used the clinic. You know, we hyped it so much back in 2010, and those of us that have used it have, you know, I hear all the time, I don't even go to my regular doctor anymore, and I think it's a stigma with the word clinic, so to speak, that the employees that are not using it, maybe one day you have an open house, let them go over, meet Dr. Grant, let them see what it's all about. Because once you go in that clinic, I mean, we all kind of, when it came on board, we all thought, meh, and then you go over there, and you realize, this is really good. And there is one fine doctor over there, that, I mean, really knows her stuff well. So maybe the people that are a little uncomfortable, maybe you have an open house one day, Connie, and bring them all over, say, hey, we just want to show it to you, you know, no pressure, let them see what it is. Because once they see it, they're going to want to go there. You know, it's just too convenient and too good. And, you know, honestly, the care you get there is wonderful, so, I mean, but it's really been a great job. And I can remember, a couple of years ago, Council was sitting, sitting with Senator Nelson in Washington, and I turned to him and said, this isn't how you need to do it, the way we do it in Olvida. This is the way to save healthcare. If every city did this, and they all had this kind of stuff, you'd see healthcare go down. People just say, okay, I'm used to the 10% every year that I'm going to get from Blue Cross, or United, or whatever. I mean, it really has been a remarkable program, one of the best that we all have done up here, and the employees' participation, everybody, I mean, it's really pretty astounding what happened here, you know? So keep up, good work.
Great job, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may just want to reiterate, and make sure we make it clear, we continue to appreciate the benefits of the clinic, and Connie and her staff, and you to work on our health and wellness. And as you said, we're trying to have our purpose in clinic, and we're the Employee Health and Wellness Center, because they carry around a lot of programs, our staff, and Eric, who are great in health and wellness, we honestly. But we just want to make very clear that with all the successes of the clinic, our early indications are that we may still, in fact, need a health insurance increase of some sort, kind of a budget, I just didn't want to let that go. And then you say, well, why are we still having to sort of create an increase at early levels that we may have to do that? However, because of the great success of the clinic, and some of the other programs, it will certainly be much less than it would have been.
Thank you.
And if, for some reason, if it was not, because these healthcare providers done, it's time to go seriously shopping, because I doubt other cities without a clinic have limited the exposure to their plans that we have. So if you get, if you see a 9% increase or something, you know, we need to have a conversation with them, why? And show them this plan, this PowerPoint. I mean, this is very good.
Is that it?
All righty. Well, go out there and minimize any impact as best we can, and look at raising copays, perhaps before you look at raising premiums, if folks aren't utilizing the tools that we have for them to utilize. So, good way to drive everybody over, and let them see how good it is. All righty, moving along. Up to the approval of minutes, item number four, approval of the minutes for the February 11th work session, and the February 18th regular session. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the vote. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item, nope, moving into public comment. Is there anybody in the audience this evening who would like to address the council on any item that is not on our agenda this evening? Don't all jump up at once. Seeing none, we will close public comment, and we will move on to the consent agenda. What is the pleasure of council?
Mr. Mayor?
Deputy Mayor?
I'd like to make a motion to approve, but I would like to pull off item number six, just for some little discussion.
So you're making a motion to approve Resolution 2637-13?
Correct.
All righty. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the approval of 2637-13? 2638-13 will become 6A. Hearing none, call the vote. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. I'd just like to make a quick comment on that work order given to John Jones and Little John Engineering. The service that you provide to citizens, and to the council, and to the staff is immeasurable. We appreciate everything you do. You're out there everywhere, at every event, just raising, and swinging, and promoting that Olvida flag, and we do greatly appreciate it, John. Thank you. All righty, moving on to item number 6A, which is Resolution Number 2638-13. Ms. Brazil, can you give us a brief introduction, and then I'll turn it over to the Deputy Mayor?
Yes, sir. This is a request for council to approve an interlocal agreement with Seminole County, and the cities within Seminole County, for the shared distribution of the 6 cent local option gas tax.
Great, thank you. Deputy Mayor, you pulled it off.
Mr. Mayor, I just pulled this off, just for one thing to point out to council. You know, I understand this is a major part of money that does a lot of good, but one of the things that, well, I mean, the spread of the money, the way they spread it around, you know, I guess that's always up for discussion, but that's not my biggest concern. My biggest concern with this is that, you know, if you approve this, this tax is for 30 years. And, you know, whether that's the way it was before, and it's always been done that way in the past, you know, I'm just not comfortable with putting my stamp on a tax for 30 years. I'm just not. And I'd like to have some clarification why the county believes that they need to, you know, put this in for 30, I mean, we don't know what happens two years from now. I mean, I could see if they did it for a couple of years, but, you know, to put a tax on gas for 30 years and not question that, to me, would be, you know, kind of irresponsible. So, you know, I just was wondering if you all had some thoughts on it, and, I mean, I've never seen something like, yeah, I need a tax for 30 years. I mean, that's just not good.
Well, does any of the other members have a question on this? I mean, I have the unfair advantage of having sat through the presentation at Mayor's Managers on exactly what this all means, and I'm sure Ms. Brazil will explain it. But are there any other questions before we get into an explanation from the City Manager? Catherine, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Yes, I just want to reiterate that this is a regular agreement that we do, that we have in place with Seminole County. Regardless of whether they choose to extend the tax or not, our distribution of those proceeds occurs every year, and so we would need to enter into a local, interlocal agreement with them for this. I will tell you a little bit about the background. The managers, as well as the mayors, have discussed, and we will be getting together to reevaluate the entire process of distribution this upcoming year for this. We've taken some steps over the last year to clarify some of the criteria that are used, because several of us in the Finance Department over the years, there's been some inconsistencies. So they've, the county's done a good job of cleaning some of that up for each of the cities. But the way it is allocated on an expenditure basis is probably going to be the focus of this upcoming year's discussion. So I don't know whether the contract will look exactly like this next year, but it will be coming back before you annually.
Do they have any talk, though, why they want it for so long?
Maybe from a political standpoint, Mr. Mayor, you could address that. We talked mostly about the logistics of the distribution itself.
Distribution, I hear where you're going. I mean, that's always up for discussion, who gets what percentage, or whatever, but I just want somebody to just...
Well, I think you're, if I may be so bold, I think you're looking at this from the wrong perspective. And you're looking at this as a tax. And it is a tax on fuel, but it is really the user fee for the miles that are driven on the roads, because that's what this covers. This comes back to the cities and back to the county in the form of dollars that are used to extend roads, repave roads, maintain drainage, sidewalks. So I honestly, and again, you know, not trying to be rude, I just think that you might be looking at it from the wrong perspective. They're not changing the tax, it's the same tax. They're not increasing it at all, even though there have been pressures to do that in the past, specifically to pay for mass transit in the form of Lynx, and Sun Rail, and others. There is going to be discussions coming up, because we've had some talks in the Mayor's Managers meetings on the charter sales tax to replace the old one-cent sales tax, which will give the cities and the county a little bit more flexibility if the voters approve it. There's been talk of the gas tax going away completely nationally, and going to a miles-driven tax, where your vehicles will actually record how many miles you've driven, and then at the end of the year, you'll pay a tax based on your usage. So then it becomes even more fair, because currently, what's happening, especially with electric vehicles, electric vehicles are driving on the same roads we're driving on, but not paying any tax. My hybrid, you know, use, gets much better gas mileage than maybe someone else's vehicle. So it's a very unfair tax, and that's a big talk over at Metro Plan, and how they're going to even it out. And really, the way everyone is leaning right now is a miles tax, and there's a name for it, and forgive me, I forget what it's called right now, but it would just be like, remember up in New York, where you used to have to get our cars inspected each year? You'd go down, renew your registration... You'd go down, renew your registration, they'd plug the thing into your car, they'd say you drove 10,000 miles, you owe us X, but you won't be paying it on the gas anymore. So, that is actually probably a more fair way of doing it, because somebody like yourself, you know, where you work locally in your home, you don't drive nearly as much as somebody like myself, who drive, you know, I drive all over the city all day long, or Councilman Britton who drives out to the coast every day. So, you know, it just would change the way things are done, so...
Well, like I said, I'm not saying that this isn't a good way. What I'm saying is I would like to see them, and I mean, I'm one, there's a lot of other people, I'm just saying for me, to say that we're going to tax somebody for 30 years and, I mean, to, Mr., August of 2043, I would like them every couple of years to say, "Hey, what's going on in the world, you know? As you bring up, there's more electric cars, there's this." But to give them a blank check for 30 years, I'm not going to vote for that, I'm just not. You know, I mean, however it is, I mean, I'm one vote, but it just hit me. I mean, everything else about the program is fine. I know what it does and it's all good, but I would like to see that more. Let's look at it every five years, not give somebody a blank check for a tax for 30 years. I mean, that's ridiculous.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I seem to remember that one of the charter responsibilities at Calno was to address this distribution each year. And if I remember right, it's based on the amount of expenditures each city expands on road repairs, which is why our percentage, if you look at those percentages, our percentage is fairly high, because we do spend quite a bit amount of money on our road repaving and repair program.
Right, and what they were talking about, Councilman, at Mayor's Managers and Ms. Brazil, if I mistake, please correct. I think some of the talk amongst the managers to forget about the distribution, the way the distribution percentage is right now, because, you know, that's, the cities are always going to want more, the counties are always going to want to give less. I mean, that's just a constant struggle and battle. But the distribution, what they were talking about to make it fair for everybody, including the county, would be by road miles in your city or in your municipality. So, you know, they just add up all the road miles in Seminole County and the percentages would be broken out based on the amount of road miles you have. And then each year, they would update it depending on who may have added road miles. So, that was part of the talk, and the managers were actually trying to get the county manager to move in that direction before this deadline, but evidently there isn't enough time for them to change what's in front of us and still meet the deadlines that are required for the county commission by this. I mean, we're not approving anything. All we're doing is saying, "Okay, we'll agree to continue on in the percentiles that have been done. Whether this is approved or not is up to the county commission." And if I'm not mistaken, it's their last meeting in March, I think?
It was supposed to be their 12th meeting, but they were discussing pushing it back. A lot of states still had questions.
Those were the types of talk. So, the agreement that came out of our last meeting, and again, Ms. Brazil, correct me if I'm wrong, is that the county manager stated, "Let's just approve it now the way it is so the county commission can approve it and move on. The managers are all going to get together with the staffs and they're going to come up with a fairer way of distributing the money rather than what's happening now." Because evidently what happens now is a lot of it gets kicked back, you know? Did you spend that money? Did you not spend that money? Was that money spent correctly? So, I truly believe that amongst, and all the managers were at the last meeting, so it was a very productive conversation, that something will come back to us next year that will have a different formula in, for distribution. So, we'll see how that works.
What about the 30 years, though? What do you think about that timeframe? We're not hitting on to my one point. That's what I want to hear some things of. What do you think about 30 years?
You know, I honestly think that, you know, the way the statutes are written, I think they have to just approve this thing in order to continue it because of a tax. I don't think that's an arbitrary number by the county commissioners, but they would have to answer that. But didn't they, because they mentioned that 30 years. I thought that was statutory or something. I don't, they can't do it for life, they've got to renew it or, there was some conversation going on.
There bonding issues?
I don't know. Anything else I'd say, I'm guessing?
It may be tied to the bonding of the road, like whatever you built, you needed that 30 years.
Because they're only levying a 6 cent tax, and believe it or not, by statute, I think it's 10 or 12 that they can go to. Does anyone know?
They can go up, yeah.
But I think they're capped at either 10 or 12. And they're not talking about raising it one penny. I mean, that's, that wasn't even part of the conversation. The entire conversation, and the chairman was also, again, it was a very well-attended meeting, it was a perfect meeting to have this discussion at. The chairman informed the whole entire group that the county commission is in no way discussing raising it. They just want to keep it steady at what it is now as they look towards these other formulas, be it mileage, be it the charter sales tax, be it all the other discussions that we're going to have in the next couple of three years as Sun Rail rolls online and, you know, mass transit rolls online. And, you know, and then the big discussion and struggle, of course, is going to be, is the cities on the eastern side of the county, ourselves, Winter Springs and to some extent Castleberry, although not so much, really don't benefit right now from Sun Rail, you know, how's that distribution going to work? So, there's going to be a whole bunch of, I don't want to call them struggles, but there'll be a whole bunch of different talks on how we evenly divide the dollars as we go. And then, of course, the other one that always gets thrown in there with the charter sales tax is the schools. Are the schools going to be able to use the extra penny sales tax to some extent like we were able to do with the last tax? As of right now, the answer to that is no. They cannot unless the legislatures change the wording on the charter tax. So, it's going to become very interesting over the next couple of years. I mean, this is just status quo right now, is all this.
Mr. Mayor.
I'd like to ask a question of Mr. Groot. Are you familiar with the agreement we're talking about, Mr. Groot?
I haven't, I'm more familiar with the 1986, I drafted.
Okay.
I think this is almost the same thing.
I think the...
The statute has evolved over time.
The distributions have changed a little bit. My question to you, and it's more to, in difference to Councilman Hankin, is, is there a way that this could be modified to implement what the mayor is talking about in the future? How would that mechanism work so that we don't go 30 years and be locked into this agreement? Would the county commission have to come back to us with an amendment? Is that how that works?
The county's merely implementing the statutory process.
Okay.
This can't be tied somewhat to how it's going about having the cities agree to the distribution.
Okay.
So, that's all we're doing. All this really is, we're just agreeing to the distribution formula, that's all it is. That's all we're doing.
So, Lonnie, are you...
And saying every year, they're going to recalculate it based on that, but they can go back next year and say, "How about going through a new agreement on this..."
A new methodology.
A new methodology entirely, changing it around.
Lonnie, are you saying that because of the state statute? The state statute requires when you renew this that it must be a 30-year term?
No. The county commission assesses the tax, and after that, it's pure implementation and distribution.
Right. I'm just... What would be the harm if they made this same agreement, said, "We'll review it every five years"? Why does it have to be 30?
It's, they'll review it every year. Every year we do the...
No, no, but by this thing, I mean, this clearly says here...
Right, it's a 30-year, they're implementing the tax for 30 years.
Extends it for 30 years. So, why, what would be the harm of taking item one and saying extending it for five years? So, if something happens, you know, you're not locked in and you didn't put your stamp on a 30-year tax. This is, everything else in here is fine. It's just, I want to know why the term is 30 years. That's a long time, and you don't know what happens. Five years.
That's their decision. That's the same, it's not, we're just agreeing...
But they're asking us to bless it.
No, we're just agreeing to how the distribution...
Not to bless how we distribute it.
We're just agreeing to the distribution formula. They're saying, "We're putting the tax out there for 30 years. Do you want to agree to this distribution formula? That's all we're doing."
You don't want your 6.4%. That's fine.
They'll keep it instead. That's all it really comes down to.
The tax is imposed, you're just agreeing to the one by which the city...
Okay, so, so when we call this vote, it has nothing to do with the time, it's only the distribution right now? Okay, well, I'm just want to be on the record that 30 years is retarded. And just a point of interest, a 4% tax distribution in 30 years from now isn't going to add up to a whole lot. I'd be surprised if it's still 4% 30 years from now.
Well, I'll be surprised if...
When gas is $15 a gallon or whatever it is.
With what they've been showing us in these, you know, the monitors or the mileage things that they've been talking about, I mean, they're really going to go to a mileage-driven tax. I mean, because this, you know, not making this discussion bigger than it already is, but, I mean, just federally, the gasoline tax federally hasn't changed, I don't know, like 20 years or some obscene amount of time. And what folks don't realize on the tax is the tax is not 6% of the price of gas, it's 6 cents. So, if gas is 50 cents a gallon, it's 6 cents. If gas is $5 a gallon, it's still 6 cents. So, it's the same cents, but gallons are going down. So, they don't have enough money in the trust fund federally, you know, to do any, to do what needs to be done. I mean, they are so woefully underfunded, which is why they're looking at different ways of measuring it and making it fair.
So, right now, we're blessing for our 6.4%.
That's all...
Not the time. The time is out of our hands.
That has nothing to do with us. This is, that is not, this agreement, this is the county's agreement, all we're concerned about is distribution.
Mr. Mayor, before we go on, I got one question. You're giving us a good lesson here on how the process works. How, what have the discussions said on how they would collect this tax? If I look at it today, they collect the tax before you drive the miles. What you're telling me is they would collect the tax after they drive the miles in the future. How, what's the mechanism they're talking about to collect that?
Well, they've looked at many different ways. The first one I discussed already, where you would actually just go to the tag office each year to renew your tag, and when you do that, they'll just plug something into that little outlet in your car and, you know, take a look, see how many miles you drove, you know, and charge you right then and there. Another one has to do with transponders that would be required in each car, where it'll actually just get picked up as you're driving. Another one is GPS that can be put into your car. All of this technology for measuring how far a car goes, it's really just going to be a test on what folks are going to tolerate, you know, how, what the government knows that you're doing. I mean, that's more the question they could, I mean...
What if you drive a car 100,000 miles in a year and then sell it to someone?
That buddy? I don't know. That's above my pay grade. I'm just telling you, I've seen a few of these PowerPoints at Metro Plan, because they always bring it by us, and, you know, the mayors, the MAC committee, I mean, we're kind of like the test bed.
Changing times, huh?
Yeah, they come in, they throw these PowerPoints up and they see how we're going to react before they take it to the big board. I mean, that's, that's what they do. And I know Councilman Shank and Councilwoman Drago have filled in for me before, when you say that's about what it is, it's a sounding board and... Yes, Ms. Brazil?
Thank you. Lonnie and I were just discussing because...
Yes, they can put a tracking device in you too and follow you around, see how the, how many miles you've driven.
There is a sentence in the resolution that may address Councilmember Hankins, excuse me, Deputy Mayor Hankins, a concern that we want to see if you're comfortable with the language, because it does go to your issue.
Oh, we're actually getting back to the question now.
Yes, sorry.
That thing was, you could have been done with this 10 minutes ago.
Where, you are correct, this is a renewal of the distribution of our regular interlocal agreement. However, in the resolution and the attachment that was provided to us from Seminole County, there is a whereas that does play to what you were talking about, that says that by approving this, you're saying as a municipality that it is in the best interest for the county to renew and extend the gas tax levy for a term not to exceed another 30 years. So, we just want to be very clear that that was still comfortable for you to keep that in the resolution, since you brought up that concern.
That doesn't necessarily mean that's what they're going to do, but that's up to then. I mean, that's, again, that's above our pay grade.
Well, listen, I think all it is, is just bringing the point out that, at least for me, I think 30 years is just a little long. I would like, I wish, I wish they would have wrote, and I realize it's out of our hands, but I wish they would have wrote in there, "We'll look at it every five years." Because as the mayor points out from all these meetings that he attends and all these new things, you know, whatever happens, now, they have a tax, they can do for 30 years. But listen, that's not our issue, so if it's just distribution, I can vote that...
I need a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2616-13.
Second. 2638-13.
2637-13.
I got 2638-13.
I have 2616-13.
Oh, you're right.
2638.
2638-13.
You know where I'm seeing that? At the end of the, at the end of the memo, when you look at the bottom of the memo, look at strategic impact. 2616-13 is...
Oh, yeah, look at that.
Yeah, there's two different ones. Yep. Okay, so, we know it's, so let me rephrase the motion. The motion is to approve 2638-13-13, gas tax into local agreement.
Second. Our motion is second. Any further discussion to beat the dead gas tax horse?
Nope.
Hearing none called the vote. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All righty, moving on. Oops, what is going on here?
That's a VMT, the miles travel time.
Thank you, that's it, VMT. Hang on a second, we have the gremlins in here tonight, because I just got knocked off.
And Washington State has thrown a tax onto electric cars, $100 a year to make up for that miles.
Is that what they're doing?
They've already put that in.
All righty, moving on, we're up to item number seven. First reading of ordinances, it is ordinance number 1562, Foster Grove Annexation. Ms. Brazil, can you give us a brief introduction, please?
Yes, this is a request for council to adopt ordinance 1562 that approves an annexation petition for approximately 7.21 acres located on the west and the east side of Lee Road. The applicant is Dave Schmidt, and the property owners are Pamela Martin, Bruce and Miriam Bruce and Evans Grove, Inc.
Thank you, Ms. Brazil. This time I'd like to entertain a motion to, oh, no, no more motions. Mr. Groot, can you read ordinance number 1562 by title only, please?
In order to the city of Oviedo, Florida, annexed by Foster, certain real property approximately 7.21 acres in size and generally located on the east and west side of Lee Avenue, approximately 560 feet north of the intersection of Lee Avenue and Altondale Drive, located in the city of Oviedo in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of section 171.04 of the orders deck. We define the boundary for the city of Oviedo and include said property, providing, providing conditions directing the city clerk to record the ordinance to clerk of the circuit court with the chief administrative officer of Seminole County and with the Florida Department of State, providing the legal description and a map, revealing all ordinances in conflict here with, providing acceptability, providing non-qualification and the takes of administrative actions, and providing for an effective, that's what I'm providing.
Thank you, Mr. Groot. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to schedule a second public hearing for ordinance number 1562 on March 18th, 2013 at approximately 6:30 PM here in the Oviedo City Hall, Oviedo City Council Chambers, 400 Alexandria Boulevard, Oviedo, Florida, 32765.
Second.
Our motion is second. Any further discussion? Seeing none called the vote. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to, let's see, we have no resolutions, so we're on to discussion items, item number eight. This is the Friends of Oviedo 501(c)(3) organization. Ms. Brazil?
Thank you. At council's request, we have been looking into the possibility of the city establishing a 501(c)(3), and we wanted to bring this to you tonight as an item for discussion among
item for discussion among yourselves, and to advise us on how to proceed if we should establish this foundation as Friends of Oviedo. And we have worked with a city attorney who has delineated the process for us and the potential cost of doing so. And we have met with Evans' family and spoken with them on proceeding along these lines. And we just opened it up for discussion to hear direction from you tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Brazil. At this time, I'll open it up for discussion. Does there anybody, council would like to lead off?
Mr. Mayor.
You got it. Councilman Schenck.
Yes. Fees are fine, that's pretty much standard, $3100, so I have no problem with all that stuff. Yeah, name Friends, or some other name. Some people didn't like just the Friends of Oviedo, but some other, but that's fine. Basically, I think, set it up as a standard 501(c), looking for a (c)(3) status. Go minimum, maximum, number of, people you minimum have to have three, I would look at a maximum of seven or nine that be on the board. Set it up with just three members of council at the beginning. The terms indefinite. I would look at other organizations and stagger the terms of the people. I usually like three-year terms, but the initial board, or one-year terms, but the initial boards usually have either a three-year term or a five-year term. But I'd say the scope really is to get the council off, except for one possibly, leave a voice on there. But really, just to have them on there at the beginning to get the process going and initially started. Should be very broad in the scope and be able to give help, words, whatever, that say, you know, provide support, donations, blah blah, and support the city of Oviedo in any way that seems reasonable. You can point out some, including but not limited to parks and recreation, any kind of community service, blah blah, organizational help, things like that. But I think it should have a broad enough scope that it can start seeking, again, to maximize the dollars that go into the town center, into the park and amphitheater, anything that's related to that. I mean, including stuff that if we want to broadcast Wi-Fi and have free Wi-Fi in that park as part of the park amenity in that area, that broad enough to be able to accomplish those kind of tasks. But again, I don't want it to really be that it's supporting the direct city's needs, but yet, you know, can help if there's needs of the police officer that relate to the town center that are very specific. I'm not going to put you on segways or anything, chief, or, you know, pre-assist or segways, but, you know, that kind of stuff. But if there's things that are very specific to those kind of areas, it's broad enough to be able to do that.
No, no, he's getting pre-assisted. He just doesn't know it yet. There's a whole joke to that with accreditation, so.
All right, I said, the length in terms, members, I think, if you start it off with city council, three members, and you give them a five-year, a three- or five-year term initial, again, the idea is to get them off and seek, you want to get other members in there and fill either five or seven, get five or seven people in that really know the mission, are to raise money and to provide assistance to the city of Oviedo. That's the basic goal. I think we talked about that Friends of Lake Mary organization. I don't know if they're going to establish 501(c)(3), but it would be them to look at quickly to kind of get an idea of what their-
There's actually a Friends of Winter Park.
And there's a Friend of Winter Park.
Something, I don't know what they call it.
Yeah. They should only, I'm, it should be to raise the money and to either present it, work with council, or the city manager, whomever, to either fund direct projects, but basically not to administer the donated funds. That will be then given over and handed over to, it's our parks, it's our, the city's parks, and it's the, so I feel it should be really, the main goal is to raise the money and awareness. It's us to administer that and to make those, make use of it. Recommendation it would be, it's the city councils, like anybody wanting to give money, thank you, but if your money comes with 20,000 hitches to it, we may not want your money. So it's really, it should be very simple that they're, they're raise money to give to what's recommended by the city council or the governing board, not for them to create their own, that entity will not be creating their own, well, we want to build a statue to Stephen Schenck in the park, that's what we're going to be doing, kind of stuff. It's the city's parks. They help, help to develop those things. The only seed money we should provide is if there's Parks and Rec money or other directed money that we're going to be utilizing in that fashion, then we could possibly seed. But I'm very wary about us seeding any money at this time. I, that's, the goal is for us to use those funds and use that 501(c) so that we can get access to funds, whether matching or direct, that a city directly isn't available to, but a 501(c), the nonprofit, will be available to. So I don't know that seeding it fulfills that accomplishment, unless we have dedicated funds already going there. If we have dedicated funds, $10,000, it's dedicated for this, it's seeded, then we can look to help other people. Again, people like to see in 501(c)s especially that there are donations. But it doesn't really look good if it's our own money, to be perfectly honest with you. That doesn't attract, really doesn't look to attract other people in. I'm done.
Anything else? Anybody?
No.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh huh.
I like the idea of having an independent 501(c)(3) and not under the umbrella of another one. I think that's really important. I think the council should be involved. And I do like Councilwoman Schenck's idea of three members to start out with, and eventually work down to one member as a representative, as we do on other boards. But I think you do need to have three on this board right now in the beginning, to help bring the vision and the mission, you know, into fruition. I would also like to see us each appoint someone from the community to be on this board. We could all draw from different areas of the city, different members, you know, we could find members that could bring something strong to the board and take it from there and let them decide who the chairman should be. I think we need somebody really strong and who has the time to bring this forward and get that 501(c)(3) done. I think that the foundation should have a very broad spectrum of raising money and what we could use it for, and have the authority to be the administrator, maybe coming to council as a, the final, just a stamp of approval type of thing. Let's see, this seed money, I agree with Councilwoman Schenck on the seed money. There goes out. And I think that's all I have.
Great, thank you, Councilwoman. Anything from my left?
Um, I'm pretty easy to along with. I think, I think an independent 501(c)(3) is my preference. And I don't have a preference on the number of council members on it. I think community representation is fine. We can pick the right folks. And I think the rest of it will all fall in place once we move forward. I think a lot of this stuff is details that will work themselves out as we grow into this. So I'm fine with what the group decides.
Mr. Group, do you have something to add to the conversation before I?
I don't want to argue against it. Let me tell you what worked in Daytona Beach Shores, maybe that would help. Because I understand the goal right now is just to get this entity created, up and running, and then move towards 501(c)(3) status, which takes some time.
Six months.
The way it worked in Daytona Beach Shores was the corporation was established, the mayor, the city manager, the finance director, the three officers. So that was done just to create it. And then we started moving towards the application of the 501(c)(3). Meanwhile, the folks in the community were made aware that this was something that would be created, this was going to be a new need to fund various activities in the city. But the goal ultimately, once everything got running, once it looked like some revenues were going to start coming in, donations, et cetera, then the council selected, like Councilwoman Drago said, different members to be the new board. And then it was turned over to that body, which could then go out and raise money and go for the projects from which the corporation was originally established, which was a broad array of purposes. Now, when it comes to how they, how that entity would ever spend money on city parks or whatever, the city council controls city parks, city council controls city facilities, city council controls everything that involves the city program, project, or activity. So that body could never expend money on something that was, quote, "a city project" without what was to the council.
Right, so they would bring it back to the council, like the councilwoman said, and then we would just, thumbs up, thumbs down.
But on the other hand, they're much, much more enabled, if you will, to go out and raise money for, for votes.
Which is what a board should do.
The city may not be eligible for procure services and even actually implement projects without some of the strictures, if you will, the government that might have. So that was the ultimate goal, was to get to that point where it raises money, but also could be, if the city wanted to enter an agreement, if, that body could implement something in a different way than the government could. So I don't know if you want to go that route, but I will tell you that after, I think it was a year or 14, 15 months, I can't remember exactly, that's exactly what happened. The city manager no longer became a member of the board, the mayor wasn't, and a group of citizens became that friends.
Lonnie, that's, I mean, that's, I just knew it had to be three people here. So whether it's three, I like yours better, actually, what you're saying for Daytona Beach Shores, is city manager, finance director is the three people, and not expand out right off the bat, that's exactly what I was, what I was saying, exactly what you just said for Daytona Beach Shores, so they seem like a perfect example.
But the corporation, it was created, and the three members passed the bylaws, the bylaws, although obviously bylaws can be changed later on, bylaws provided that the finance director would always be in council, in council with the board or something like that. So he could always have some type of interaction and oversight with the board. But that would be absolutely more of a, anyway, those are thoughts.
Well, that sounds like a good wrap-up of the three conversations that we heard. Councilman Britton said it'll evolve. Councilwoman wanted a little bit of oversight from us, and Councilman Schenck kind of let it off. So that sounds like a good way to start it. The only thing I would add, and again, this is premature, as Councilman Britton said, but I think in just some of the meetings I've sat in with, with some of the families who are interested in possible donations to a fund like this, so they can leave their legacy behind, which is really where this was all born from, the community center and things of that nature, that it would be better, as we start to move forward and collect funds, to more narrow the focus of the funds down. Like, for instance, the YMCA board that I sit on here in Oviedo, our main fundraising goal as a member of that board is scholarships. We have a goal of $250,000 a year, that's the amount of scholarships they give out at the Oviedo YMCA. So our board's function is to raise that money. The board doesn't have any say in how the money is spent, once we raise it. And really, as a board member, and this is how the board, as you were saying, will evolve with time, my role on this particular board is really just to create the contacts for the director to go with his team and make the pitch. So, you know, and of course, any donations you could pick up along the way, you know, I'm free to go do that. But as far as narrowing the focus, what some of the conversations, and again, these will all evolve over time, but just to plant seeds, is that if you had like a community center fund as part of this, you know, where the city is, you know, renovating the community fund, and whether we've already done it, and we're trying to get the donations in order to name things to recoup our dollars, or however we go about that will be a separate discussion. But, you know, something along that lines. There was talk of, Councilman Schenck hit on like amenities for Oviedo on the park. You know, do you want to add an amenity into the park? And not necessarily a tree with your name on it, but, you know, a bench, a picnic table, you know, a something of more substance, that you'd almost have like a menu, so to speak. You know, you can get a picnic table for $1,000, I don't know, you know, whatever it may be. But-
What you're getting on is almost restricted under restricted funds, but you're really not there. What you're talking, kind of about, and I know what they're talking about. They're talking about very restricted funds, which is good. And when you move down the line, it becomes very important to have your funds restricted very much to only what it's, like I said, like you're saying, for the community center. But as a new organization, usually, that's a very tough thing to do. And most organizations don't really legally restrict their funds. They have, like you're saying, benches. That's just a, well, if you give $100, it's a bench. That kind, you know what I mean? Versus a true, there's legal, like you have to put it in certain places, what they, when the Evans and Dave were talking about, the funds they were talking about, were very restricted funds that you have to give into. And that money, you define clearly the only uses that are available to that.
Right, like community center.
And the reason why- That's actually broad. I'm being honest with you, when you say that, it's very broad, but it limits you to, well, when you say community center, does that mean roadway around community center, the community center inside? That's what I'm saying.
Well, you're really drilling down. What I'm, what I'm saying is that we would need to set up, or in my opinion, designated funds, and, you know, however we drill those things down.
And if the finance committee will do that, as they get settled up, that's what I think a finance committee portion will do.
But we need to, and I don't want to say sooner than later, but we need to get rolling on this, because there are opportunity, opportunities that present themselves as growth occurs in this city, where there are people who may be willing to help us in this endeavor, and their help is much easier for us to capture if the word "tax deduction" is put at the end of the sentence. So, you know, the community center has a goal of, you know, whatever the number is, it bounces all over, and we'll, we're going to talk about that at a workshop coming up. But let's assume that goal is $800,000 to renovate the center into the event center that we're looking for. Opportunity presents itself that would be easier to work with, like I said, if those two words with (c)(3), three syllables are at the end of it. So-
Well, and we can be almost immediately, once you apply, unless, I'm going to say, unless whoever puts together-
Is that a better description, Ms. Brazil?
I'm just dying for Lonnie to answer.
Can I just say one thing real quick?
Sure.
Just to make it clear, donations to the city can be tax deductible. Donations to a nonprofit corporation which isn't a 501(c)(3) can't be tax deductible. The 501(c)(3) status just removes all doubt, and the IRS is with you all the way.
Right.
Which is a nice thing sometimes.
Yeah, I've had that, but you get status, the status is official at six months, about, takes about six months currently. But it's, you get retroactively to when you apply. So if we go through the process, once you apply, unless we define something that's clearly out of the bounds of the goals of a nonprofit and tax deductibility-
Lonnie, as soon as we're clear that I can go out and have discussions, just let me know. Well, once, once you have this 501(c)(3) moving along far enough where I can go out and have discussions with potential partners, or the council members can, just let us know.
Okay.
Because opportunities are out there. Because opportunities are out there right now, and before they get too far along, we should try to take advantage of them. Catherine, do you have, Ms. Brazil, I'm sorry, do you have clear direction?
Yes, I just want to make sure everyone's having an opportunity.
That's all right. You know what? You had a hard time with that tax, we're giving you a break.
I don't like taxes. Taxes are not good.
Mr. Mayor, it's our intention then to move forward with retaining corporate status with the Florida Department of State and moving towards 501(c)(3) status with the IRS.
And follow the Daytona Beach Shores model, is what I heard for initially.
Under the Friends of Oviedo.
Pick a name.
Oviedo Foundation Board, you know, whatever.
Don't use the word foundation.
You can always change the darn name, I guess.
You can't.
No, don't use the word foundation. If there's a legal, if there's a true foundation, and we will not be setting up a foundation.
Oh, then do Friends of Oviedo.
Friends of Oviedo.
I just got a couple of quick things, just to agree, because that's always good going last, because all the ideas come out, you don't have to be so long-winded. But just, I do believe going forward, I was going to say that if I had to go first, but, you know, maybe the mayor, one other council member, or I like the idea of the mayor and the city manager, the two people that are watching.
And the finance director.
And the finance director, who are watching this a little bit more close. And in the end, I liked what Councilwoman Drago said, you know, I'm not sure a board of seven is effective. I like boards of five, I think it's better, but that after those, you know, those people, that we would appoint those, and again, Lonnie hit on an excellent point, that they can raise the money, but ultimately, when it gets spent, that's got to come back here for us to approve. We're going to approve a park that's a city property or something like that. So those are the things that I would just make sure that we have in there, that everybody understands.
I think to, Councilwoman, if I'm wrapping your thoughts up wrong, please tell me, but I think that what the councilwoman was thinking, see, with a Friends Board, a Foundation Board, whatever you want to call it, you have your executive board, and that can be five people, it doesn't matter, but then you have the larger board, so you have more people out there asking. More people you have out there asking, the greater your success. I mean, the UCF Board I sit on, I mean, there must be 80 of us, but there's the executive board of five. They're the ones who set all the direction, make all the decisions.
And that's a maximum seven. When I say, like, mostly you say a maximum seven, so then the board, the three of them would decide at first, here we go, two more, and then whatever.
Multiple people out there raising money, but when it comes time to expend the funds, it really should be a tightly.
Yeah, then that comes back.
It should not be dominated by the city council. I think it should be the mayor, you know, for sure, and then whoever else wants to be, but I think Cindy pointed out very well, we should appoint some of those people, and when the funds get expended, to come back to that board, whatever it is, so we know. But the other thing, just to close, is clearly define what it is they're raising money for. I mean, I heard this discussion with Councilman Schenk and the mayor, you know, and splitting heads, you know, I'm not sure that you want to start this off and have 10 different things, but maybe two really important things, and expand it as time goes on, because you start telling, oh, what am I donating money for? Well, we got these nine things. No, it's these two or three, you know, just so we have that, and then I think we're good. Good.
And I'll just add that we could wrap this into what the clerk does for you regularly, having you all see the submissions and the citizens who wish to apply, and you can appoint and approve the board.
That'd be good.
Get on her regular schedule.
And Ms. Brazil actually has a tremendous amount of knowledge about how these boards are set up and run. I was very impressed when we were sitting, having the conversations with Drew and some of the founding families, the amount of knowledge that came through on how they work, so.
Done this for a very long time, thank you.
Good job.
I just sat there and agreed with everything, it was easier. All righty, is there anything else? I think you've got, you're pretty good on that one. City managers report.
The only item I have is to reiterate the Oviedo on the Park, March 21st groundbreaking, if that's still consensus with council.
In my calendar.
At 4:00.
There we go. What time we going to cut the ribbon? At 5:00, is that the plan?
Honestly, we hadn't gotten that far through. We had designated 4:00 to 6:00, and I got PACs concurrents, that that would work for them.
Tent, food, drinks, ribbon, block party type of deal on Oviedo Boulevard, maybe, or?
As big as you would like us to make it. We have invitations to go out in the next couple of days.
Make sure we get the whole community involved, make sure that the newspapers, Mr. Weber, pick up on this, and get it out there, you know, and Oviedo Boulevard, it would be the most convenient, because of all the parking that's available up and down it, and do it at that stubout over there where Taste of Oviedo used to set up the stage, Drew, that's probably the best area. I'm just throwing things out there, but you'd have the most parking and the most availability, and, you know, a tent, stage, microphones, blah, 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 you know, and off we go. Get Lump out there with his grill, he got a new grill, did you see it? You haven't seen Lump's new grill? Oh, it's impressive.
It is.
Very impressive, so get him out there with his grill, he'll have fun. 21st is good with everyone?
Yes.
It's good. Councilwoman? Excellent.
Thank you.
Let's have fun with this.
That'd be great.
Citizens waited a long time. Anything else, Catherine?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Councilman, oh, no, sorry, Councilwoman, I'll get to you in a second. Lonnie, do you have anything for us?
Real quickly, there'll be another draft of the sign slash flag ordinance coming out, and ultimately, you'll be looking, I think, to have a work session on it, and I understand your jam-packed work sessions, so that may be problematic, but it'll be available soon and ready to go to that process. The only other thing is, the Marion County Stormwater Fees case is still pending in the Fifth District Court of Appeal, there's been some activity, but no decision yet, so the Key West case was decided, as you know, but the Marion County case is still hanging around.
What about the Key West?
Excuse me?
They agreed with the school. Not school, but the college.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Group. Councilmember Britton.
Okay, few things here.
Boy, I'll tell you what, we had the Babe Ruth baseball opening day Saturday, and beat
the Little League the day, the week before that, and it's really impressive, I think they said they had 900 kids enrolled in the Babe Ruth program, and I would have to guess something very similar to that in the Little League.
Four something.
Four something? That's a lot of kids that are going to be busy in the summertime, and I think that's a real tribute to the way we provide for our citizens. And Mr. Mayor, I'll give you a credit, where credits do, you give a good presentation when you get out there and explain all the things that we do in the city for these families to raise their kids and make these events possible, so.
Thank you, Councilman.
I think that's incredible, when you lop on the Oviedo girls soccer team, and the Hagerty High School's boys basketball team, 8A state champs, that's quite a ribbon of successes we've got going for us right now.
ROTC?
ROTC, the bands, it's really something that, when you sit back and look at it in total, it's really impressive. So I just wanted to bring that out and congratulate all the folks and all the parents that are involved in all these programs for all the hard work they do. Chief, that was a great award ceremony you had last week. Congratulations to all the officers, and I'm still waiting for my award, because Officer Seraphin's been my neighbor for 15 years, and he's only been on the force for 10 years, so I've been putting up with him longer. You need a statue for that. And finally, I've got a Calno meeting Wednesday, but I have somewhat of a conflict, because I have the strategic planning meeting scheduled at 6:00, and Calno starts at 7:00. Is there any takers to sub for me at Calno?
I usually go, does anyone else want to go? Want to go?
I can't.
You can't?
I can't go.
What night is it, Keith?
It's Wednesday in Lake Mary, and they're having it in.
This Wednesday?
Yeah, they're having it in conjunction with their food truck war, so it's going to be across the street, and.
What time is it?
Folks are going to, it starts at.
If you want to go, I can do it.
6:30 to 7:00 is the meeting agenda.
Councilman, it's up to you, I've gone before in the past, if you want to go.
Good call.
I'll head up there, why not? Just send me the info, and I'll go for it.
Okay, so I'll see you robbing at 6:00 on Wednesday. And then the only other thing I've got going on is the following Thursday, not this Thursday, we've got an ION meeting, and we're going to go over the needs program for homeowners that need, are in need of repairs, that's something the county's rolling out. I'll also roll out this Seminole Bar Association program for legal assistance with folks that are facing foreclosure, and we'll make that available to the community. And we can maybe make it available to the bar association, to the overall community.
We're putting that on the website as well.
Okay, all right, very good.
And you're going to send me the Calno information?
Yeah, I'll send it to you tonight.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it, thank you.
All righty, I'll just brief, because Councilman Britton covered a lot of the events that we've been at. We were at State of the County also, which was a nice luncheon on Wednesday, the 20, what was that, 27, something like that, but Wednesday the 27th. Right, some of us thought it was Friday the 22nd, but.
You were there in spirit.
You were there in spirit with us on Wednesday the 27th. But that was, as always, a very well-attended event, and the chairman did a good job taking us through the history of Seminole County, so that was very nice to be part of. Farmer's Market was this Saturday, and Chief, again, it was crowded. And what?
And windy.
Oh, yeah, it was windy. But the Farmer's Market is going strong, and the Historical Society does a great job with it. I've got a string of State of the Cities coming up over the next couple of weeks. I've been asked to give the State of the City to a few different HOAs, the Historical Society, the Rotary Club, two different HOAs, and then the President's HOA. So I've got like five of them over the next two weeks, so those are always a lot of fun. I do enjoy doing that, and, you know, if anybody would like to join, the one at the Historical Society, that'll be the 19th. And if you really want to come out and have some fun, you can ring the bell and sing some songs with me at the Rotary, but you all have to be there at 7:00.
Morning.
So in the morning, not in the evening, but that one's a lot of fun. I'm also going to be doing a State of the City for Oviedo Citizens in Action. They had requested one, and we're going to do it here in the council chambers, I believe, so that way we can accommodate a larger crowd than their normal meeting space. Danny McKinney's going to get back to me, I sent him an email today with a couple of dates in April, so we'll let everybody know when that's going to be, and they'll have their OCIA meeting, either they'll have their meeting here, and then we'll go into the State of the City, or State of the City, then they'll have their meeting. That hasn't been finalized just yet, but as soon as we hear back, Chief, or I will let everybody know. With all that being said, that is all I have for tonight, so let's move on to Councilman Schenk.
Thank you. Speaking of Rotary, it was a great Rotary pancake breakfast yesterday.
Oh, yeah, I forgot about that.
They put on a great job, like always.
Pancakes are good.
Pancakes are very good. Very crowded, it was really crowded. We went kind of in that in-between time of churches, and I didn't think they'd be able to, you know, usually it's kind of a the lull, but it was actually very crowded, so I, they did very well, I hope that they did very well, but it looked like they did. I was at the behind-the-scenes of UCF Creole last week, got an opportunity to see that facility and the entrepreneurship that they foster, and how many companies have popped from literally inside there, coming out, one of them out in California doing $40 million last quarter from their optics. It was really interesting and very enlightening to see that facility, and that teaching facility, what they do there. The school rezoning, I get a lot of information on, I don't know if you guys do, is next, March 12th, will be the east side for the school board, so you may be hearing from people. It doesn't look like there's a lot of big movement that people are very upset about, but you might hear some little bits of movement, but it seems like it is calmer for our section of town and for Oviedo itself. Chief, it was great going to the accreditation ceremony, that was a wonderful thing, it was really nice to be up there and see, and all the great words that people, when we were just talking with them, that they had to say about the process, and about how well they thought Oviedo did during the process, and just good words about the police department.
Yeah, we just saw that you're not getting leafs, you're getting, no, you're getting leafs, not preuses, that's what you're getting. Leafs.
Leaf is scary.
Big extension cords.
Exactly. Taste of Oviedo's coming up this weekend, so again, we were talking about being down at the mall, so it'll be a great time, and we also have Dare at Lawton with Officer Duffy, we truly love, and the kids truly love, but it was another good Dare last week. So that's it.
Excellent. Councilman Henken.
One quick thing, I just want to, again, Chief Chudnow, that was a very fine banquet award ceremony you put on, I thoroughly enjoyed that, and I will say, you have some young guns in there that are on their way somewhere, and I don't mean guns literally, but I mean, we.
Golden boys.
Some of the new guys that we have brought on, there's a nice balance over there from the youth to the guys that have been here 10 years, to some of the experienced guys, so, you know, I had a goal that I shared with the chief that in a couple of years, and I told the city manager too, that hopefully at the entrance of our cities, we'll have signs, "Welcome to Oviedo, the safest city in America," and some of these guys are on their way, especially your Officer of the Year, Alona, this kid is everywhere. Kind of reminds me of a young Varcone, you know? He's everywhere. So, but good job for you guys, tell them to stay safe, and girls, stay safe and keep up the good work.
Varcone's still young.
He wasn't at the banquet though.
He got so many, he got so many awards, he don't need to come home.
He's got our hits.
You know, he cleaned up like two years ago, he's good.
They are getting younger, we're getting older, I haven't figured it out yet.
Well, it's a combination vote.
Counselwoman, last, but certainly not.
Yes, well, you all covered everything very nicely, and I'm good.
And she's feeling better, so that's the big key. Are you feeling better? Yes. Are you starting to feel better?
I'm starting to feel a little bit better, yes.
All righty, future meeting dates, we've got a bunch of them. March 11th, we have a work session, that is at 5:00 PM here in the city council chambers. On March 18th, we have a governing board meeting for the CRA at 5:30, followed by a regular session at 6:30. John, why don't we make that 6:00? Does that work for you?
I'll control the matter.
Okay. It's kind of silly to make you run all the way, unless there's a reason you want to come out here earlier and go home. No? Okay. All right, if we can make that sick, just make it easier, because that's not a long meeting. April 1st, regular session, 6:30. April 13th, which is a Saturday, 9:00 AM strategic planning, I'm assuming that's going to be off-site somewhere? Have we firmed up a spot yet?
Yes, sir. Yes, the community room at the mall. We did check all the other locations that council members suggested, and either space availability or cost, we have tentatively held the community center at the mall.
That's fine. Then on April 15th, oh, April 15th, 6:30 PM regular session. With all that being said, thank you everybody for coming, it's about 8:30 PM, meeting is adjourned.